And as we start out every meeting, we'll read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larnie.
Alright, so we need a motion to move into executive session. Need someone to make that, please?
I make a motion that we move into executive session.
Okay, and just to be clear, the motion will be to move, to go into executive session, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent, and to reconvene in open session. So we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, now we need also a roll call for that motion, so again, sorry, no, we just did this, but go right on.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle. Alright, so what we'll do is we will adjourn, go into executive session for a few minutes, and then we'll be right back to open session, hopefully in just a couple of minutes, so talk among yourselves. Okay, so reconvene into open session at this point, and we're going to go slightly out of order since we were excited to have company. So we've got the technology team has got a little presentation for us, so you guys are up, let's see it.
You guys have one moment.
Those are not, don't listen to me.
It's almost, they'll be up shortly.
Good job, though.
Good evening. The technology team is happy to be here once again. It's been about a year since we've last seen you, so we want to update you on what we've been up to. And I would like to reintroduce you to the technology team. We have Robin Tousere, who is the district, I'm sorry, who is Technology Integration Specialist at Freeman Kennedy, 306. We have Raphael Sardi, who's District IT. And we have Mark Peasey from H.O.D., who is the Tech Integration Specialist for K2. So tonight, I'm going to update you on a few things that we've been working on, then I'm going to turn it over to Robin. And Robin is going to talk about a change that we made in the way that we deliver instruction this year. And then, we have a real treat for you tonight because we have some awesome students from Freeman Kennedy here with us, and Robin is going to introduce them to you in just a couple of minutes. We are living, as you know, in an innovative era, and it was only back in August 6th of 1991 that the Internet became publicly available. When the Internet became publicly available, it changed the way that we work, that we live, that we play. For example, if we take a second to think of all the industries that have changed since 1991, you don't have to own a fleet of taxis to have a car-sharing business, you can have your own car, hence we have Uber. You don't have to own a hotel chain to rent a room or a house, Airbnb. And you don't even have to own a department store to buy and sell your own clothing. There's an app out there called Shop My Closet, and you can sit comfortably at home and sell your clothes to somebody else. So, technology, as you know, is moving at a rapid-fire pace. So this year, what we decided to do with the technology team is to focus on two goals that were in our technology strategic plan. And the first goal that we focused on was to offer more professional learning opportunities to our staff. And the second goal was to think about the way that we are delivering instruction to our students, to make it more effective and efficient. So I'm going to talk to you about that just for a minute. Our professional learning opportunities were designed to strengthen the understanding of the 2016 Massachusetts Digital Literacy in Computer Science standards, which incorporated updates and expectations for technological literacy. Since August, last August, the tech team has offered over two dozen technology classes for staff. And the feedback that we got from the Professional Development Committee recently was the staff wants even more. So that's a good thing. In addition to offering these professional learning opportunities, our technology team at Norfolk has been collaborating with Plainville-Rentham K6 technology teams. The tech directors in the teams have come together on a monthly basis to talk about a wide variety of issues. Recently, in January, we hosted a Professional Learning Day. We had over 100 people in attendance, and we were with our colleagues from Plainville and Rentham here. And some of those teachers came here and taught, and then we went over and we switched locations in the afternoon, and we went over there and taught. We offered nine workshops that day in technology, and again, the feedback for that was amazing. The way that those workshops were designed was so that every session had time available at the end to play with some of our robots, or to play with some of our coding devices, or to learn how to use the new application. So it wasn't just all directed, it was a lot of interaction, and it seemed that the staff really enjoyed that. Currently, we are starting to work on our Professional Learning Days that are coming up in August. Again, that, I believe it's the end of August, we will have nine technology workshops offered for staff prior to school getting started. And we are in the middle of planning our second annual Triton Professional Learning Day as well for next year. In addition to the increase in the number of professional learning opportunities, we have partnered with the teachers this year, and we held two special technology events for the students. And those events were spearheaded by Raphael, Mark, and Robin, and those were a Digital Learning Day and hour of code. Digital Learning Day is a nationwide celebration created by the Alliance for Excellence in Education that highlights great teaching and demonstrates how technology can improve student outcomes. Hour of Code, which takes place every year during Computer Science Education Week, started as a one-hour instruction on computer science, and it was designed to demystify code. It was in hopes of that everyone could see, that everyone could learn the basics of coding. And that has since become a worldwide effort to celebrate computer science. These two events were also enjoyed by every classroom in the district. Look at this slide here for one minute. 65% of today's grade school students will end up at a job that has yet to be invented. Think how powerful and true that statement is. Think about the kindergartner that started in September over at H.O.D. School, five years old. In 13 years, when that student graduates high school, where will technology be? It was only in 2007 that the iPhone was invented, and that was like 10, 11 years ago. So what's going to happen, right, in the next 10, 11 years? We are seeing things like 3D printers in hospitals, printing down valves, printing limbs, right? We are looking at a wide variety of capabilities, like the digital assistants, Alexa, Amazon Echo, Google Home, which have the capabilities of turning on our lights, and locking our doors, and jacking up our heat. Technology, once again, is moving at a rapid pace. So we need to focus on getting our students future-ready in technology, not just the content area, ELA, math, science, and social studies, but we need to focus on future-ready in technology. And we're doing that by reinforcing the four Cs of 21st century skills: critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. In order to thrive in a more complicated world, the students will need to know how to work collaboratively and with a collective intelligence. And that's what these guys are doing here, and I can't wait for them to get up in two minutes. Collaboration necessitates communication. Solutions will require tenacity, creativity, critical thinking, in this complex world in order to problem-solve. We not only encourage these skills every day, but we constantly see them in motion in the maker space. And we have some very special guests here tonight, as I said earlier, and they're going to get up in just a minute. At this time, I just want to turn this over to Robin to talk about how we tweaked the instruction in technology this year, and how it was delivered to the students.
Okay, thanks, Trish. So, we've been working, over the past several years, the entire team, to try to figure out what's the best way to deliver instruction when it comes to technology, and we recognize that it's not separate from the rest of the curriculum, and we really have been working to integrate it. This year, we piloted something new, we were really excited about it, we continue to be very excited about it. We, for eight weeks, Mark and myself went into classrooms on a regular schedule, we co-taught with teachers, we had lessons ready for them to review and to follow up with once we stepped out of the classroom. We worked with the students, we were able to combine the Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science standards, along with the ISTI standards. We actually, just as a side note, we used the ISTI standards as the basis for our Digital Learning Day breakouts, where we had each grade level kind of assigned to a different standard. So we've been really excited about that, we're looking forward to where that's going to continue to take us, which leads me to our guest this evening. Our next slide here, thanks, Trish. What does it mean to be a maker? As Trish mentioned, that staggering number, 65% of students, and I've been hearing that for years, and you know, varies by 5 or 10%, but it's a huge number of jobs that are going to be available for our students that we don't even quite know what they look like, but we do understand the types of skills that will be required, and they definitely tie right into those four Cs. Our maker space really exemplifies that, it's a space where students can collaborate, think critically, be creative, but beyond that, it's really a mindset, it's not just that one room in our school. And I see some of my friends nodding their head, it's not just in that, in those four walls, it's that, kind of those ideas that go with them. And we have some students here tonight that I'm going to introduce you to that have taken their ideas and have just run with them. I think I have one more. And they've worked on their own time outside of school, they have worked during recess, they've worked during kind of elective time, and we've been astounded, I know you get to pop over less frequently, and when you see what's happened from beginning to end, it's just amazing. So I'm going to introduce my Girls Who Code. We have a group that meets on Tuesday afternoons. I have two representatives here, Cece Fitch and Bridget Sweezy, thank you so much for being here, girls. I'm going to introduce them first, let them tell you a little bit about our Girls Who Code program, which ties in with everything we've been talking about thus far, and then I'm going to introduce the gentlemen.
We are members of Freeman Kennedy's Girls Who Code Club. Girls Who Code was created since only 20% of computer science graduates are female. Members of the Girls Who Code Club work together to create computer science projects with a positive impact. The process of building their projects, in the process of building their projects, you will learn about real-life strategies and practices in the business world. We begin each meeting by learning about a successful woman using computer science. We end each meeting by using a stand-up to share what we are working on, struggling with, sharing, struggling on, or sharing, something that we are proud of. One reason I like Girls Who Code is you can meet with girls your age and do something amazing. Bridget and I are working on a part of a website where we can help different girls find out different activities they would like to use.
Our group brainstormed several ideas we want to work on during Girls Who Code. We voted on one that we want to focus on, and we've been working hard at it ever since. We chose to develop a website for girls who don't have moms at their house. There's a number of reasons girls should not live with their mothers. We are working to create a safe place for girls to visit, learn, and be entertained and interact with a positive role model. Some of us are partnered up, and others of us are working independently, but we are all working for a common goal. One reason I like Girls Who Code is that you can interact and meet with girls who have the same coding interests as you do.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
I have to tell you, thank you. When I sent out the information about Girls Who Code, and that was going to be started, I had some pretty angry boys who were wondering, "Why is it Girls Who Code?" And they were quick to say, "Well, there are only 20% of females are the computer science graduates, so that's why we have that." Thank you so much, girls. So they are, as you heard, developing a website for, targeted for girls who don't either live with their mom or don't have a mom at home, and it's to inform, to entertain, to educate, and to interact with positive role models. And we can agree, that's pretty amazing. Alright, I'm going to have my sixth-grade boys come on up and introduce you.
Robin, can I ask, if they're talking, can they use the microphone so that they'll be able to hear at home?
Oh, sure.
It's right up there.
Oh, sure, okay.
Great.
Alright, thanks. Sure, they're ready. Take it away, boys. Okay. You know what I'll do, I'll have you introduce yourselves, and you can pass the mic.
I'm Trevor Clyde.
I'm Neil Carlson.
I'm Aiden Cassasso.
I'm Kyle Henry.
And my friends and I have been working on this project for months now, and it is called Trash It Ball.
Basically, what it is, is it's a game made of recyclable materials, and we made a button that is made up of cardboard, aluminum foil, and Saran Wrap. And we put aluminum foil on the top and bottom, so when the ball hits the top, it, and aluminum foil goes in, touches the other part of the aluminum foil, and it, it...
Completes the surface.
Completes the surface, and it causes the makey-makey to transfer the contact to the points, and, yep.
So we ran into a few problems while creating our project. One of them was, we couldn't figure out how to decipher whether a made shot is a two-pointer or a three-pointer. So how we did that is, we have two buttons over there, and if you step on the first one, it lets the computer know that it's a three-pointer or a two-pointer, and then the farther button's a three-pointer, and that when the button's pressed, it lets it know that it's a three-pointer.
And I'd like to say that we were stuck on this problem for a while, and then Trevor went home and somehow figured out how to do it. But, once we figured that out, we ran into a couple other problems, one of them being that the button inside the hoop wasn't consistent, so we had to sense, when the ball was hitting the edges, it wouldn't count the point. So, we were thinking that, and on a real basketball hoop, there's a rim, which prevents it from going in as much, so we created a rim. So, the reason there's no back rim is because, as basketball players, we decided that we didn't want a back rim because it's the most annoying part of the hoop.
Want to go over and just test it out?
Yeah.
Sure. Cool. Yeah. So, when he stepped on that, the timer started. That was like one time. Is this? Yeah.
Should have added a back rim. Yeah, we should have added a back rim. But so, that's, we're still kind of finding the problem that the button's not as consistent, and so, I probably should have had like 20 points there, but...
At least.
So, yeah.
Alright, so, the makey-makey, do you want to bring that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can apply that.
Or the, his, the channel. So, the makey-makey is like a little kid idea, which is like, you can use different materials for like buttons. So like, and one of the stuff that we saw in the makey space, like a banana piano, but we decided to use like tinfoil for the butt, for like conductive, and so...
And the makey-makey, it has like an up arrow, a right arrow, down arrow, left arrow, and then it has a space, a spot for a spacebar, and like a place to like, if you click, it will sense it, unlike the mouse. But, so, we connected certain wires, like the wires that were connected to the left button would connect to the left arrow on the makey-makey, which would trigger the point on the computer, and then vice versa on the other side, and so, that's about it.
To conclude our presentation, I wanted to thank the tech team for making it possible for us to work on this and organizing everything. I think they did a good job integrating all the technology into our school, because now every day, I use the tech to work on my schoolwork, instead of just having it to be a fun activity for us to do some of the time.
I'd also like to say that, I think this was the biggest problem that we had throughout the entire time, was, so our classes, so me and Trevor, so RCI is a time for any class to get caught up on work that they need to do, and so Kyle, Aiden, and we don't, a member that's not with us right now, Cam, they all had RCI in the afternoon, but me, no, they had it in the morning, and then we had, me and Trevor had it in the afternoon. And so, the problem was, we could never get together all at once to discuss what we worked on last time we were there. And so, finally, we had one recess where we all came together and discussed, and then it kind of all started working then. Also, last time me and Trevor came down to the maker space, the backboard was all ripped up and broken, so we were a little confused, but we fixed it, put a little bit too much tape on, it works now.
Thank you. Thank you, boys.
Great job.
So, thank you to the Trash It Ball boys and the Girls Who Code tonight, and thank you to Robin and Mark and Raphael. First small team, they have deep, deep talent. And thank you to the school committee and the administration for supporting our technology initiative, and to the PTO, who has really helped us out with making places like the maker space possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
We just had one for some people that might not know. What is ISTI and the ISTI standards?
What is...
ISTI?
Oh, ISTI, the ISTI standards, yep.
International Society for Technology and Education. It's nationally, and even internationally, it's the most widely-known organization. Thank you for asking and for the clarification.
We all knew it.
So many hours.
Yeah, it's, someone had to ask, but okay. Any comments, guys? Outstanding job.
Awesome.
Excellent job. Thank you guys so much for coming and sharing your learnings.
You guys did a great job.
You guys want to sit here? Ladies, you want to sit here, you guys take over for us? Alright, we've got one volunteer, so we're good. Thank you very much, thank you tech team folks, appreciate you guys coming. Trish, always nice to see you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks, Trish.
Nice to see you.
Alright, so now...
I think our whole public just left.
Yeah, I'll say, we'll move on to public comment, but I think we've lost our public, so... Okay, we'll give them a second here. Alright, so then we will move on, hold on, I've got to get myself organized here, and we have some donations, and now we need to find it. Is that exhibit one, right? Okay, bear with me one second here, we have a donation. Okay, so we have donations totaling $1,091. 300 of it is for the Girls Who Code who just left, it's a mini-grant, and then the Hakamak YMCA, also a mini-grant of $791, that one's for H.O.D. So the total donations are $1,091. Do we have a motion to accept those?
Can I make a motion that we accept the generous donations?
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for those. Alright, moving on from there, we will move on immediately to a recognition tonight, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your point of view, Mark's Jeff Traumers' last official meeting with us. So we wanted to just take a few seconds to recognize him, we wanted to thank him for his dedicated years of service over the last six years, and just as a brief overview of his time with us. So he was elected in 2012, re-elected in 2015, so that's two consecutive three-year terms. He's done a lot of stuff over the time he has been here. He has served as a legislative rep, as an office rep to the King Philip School Committee. In prior years, he was instrumental in launching the Public Schools Technology Steering Committee. So what we just witnessed tonight, he had a hand in, so that's fantastic. Supported district in moving forward innovative curriculum, which leverages technology to enrich and strengthen learning for all children. As a representative of KP, he served on the Unit B Negotiations Team, and also served on the KP Technology Committee. He regularly attended the Mass Association of School Committees Conference, I think every year dutifully, so I don't know what we're going to do next year, as well as the Mass Q Tech Conference. Has been a strong advocate for education in the town of Norfolk. Service is greatly appreciated by the staff, the members of the community, as well as your fellow board members. We wish you certainly all the best, appreciate your efforts, thank you, you will be missed, and nice job, so.
I think, Mrs. Balfour, you've had a couple of comments you wanted to share, is that correct?
Uh, need a microphone.
You have to come to the microphone, I'm sorry.
You don't get that lucky.
Okay, Mr. Traumers. Okay, well, Jeff, I actually just found out this afternoon that this was your last official meeting. So, I guess you thought you were going to go out quietly, and...
Not too much.
That doesn't like you at all, so I was surprised with that. But, anyway, we, I felt like I had to take this opportunity to thank you on behalf of myself and everyone at H.O.D., and I'm sure I'm speaking for both of our schools, for all that you've done for the Norfolk Public Schools, and you've done things in so many ways. So, Jeff, you've been a true advocate of our schools and our goals, supporting our endeavors for so many years. You've been an articulate and very energetic voice for education at all levels, not just the elementary schools, but also the middle school and KP. So your voice has been very much appreciated. What I have always found so appealing about your membership on the committee is that you have always been interested in finding out more about our schools and our programs and initiatives. And the reason for that was so that you'd be more informed and be a better advocate. We never felt that it was, in a way, that was like, "What are they doing there?" You know, it was always like, "What are they doing there? How can I support that?" And we always really appreciated that, because you advocated what we need for what we need and for what we aspire to. You've consistently recognized the efforts of our teachers, our staff, and our administrators, even bringing us coffee and hot chocolate sometimes on cold mornings, and you always seem to know just when that would be the most appreciated and when it would really hit the spot. As a parent, a member of the community, and a school committee member, you've expressed your appreciation for all that we do at H.O.D., and I'm sure that exactly the same thing is true at FK. We are grateful for your appreciation for what we do as educators, that appreciation really means a great deal. We've been very fortunate to have you as a partner in education. We know that you'll continue in that role as a parent and a community member in all the years to come. So we wish you the best in the future, we thank you for working with us and helping us to live our vision: teach, inspire, empower, succeed. And you never underestimated the importance of that word, empower, very important. And in your case, that E could also stand for exuberance in your role, because we always felt your energy. Please feel free to come back to H.O.D. to visit us at any time, our door is always welcome, especially if you have that coffee and hot chocolate with you. So thank you, Jeff, your efforts are really, truly appreciated. Thank you.
And we have a card for you.
committee, is that you have always been interested in finding out more about our schools and our programs and initiatives. And, um, the reason for that was so that you'd be more informed and be a better advocate. We never felt that it was, in a way, that was like, what are they doing there? You know, it was always like, what are they doing there? How can I support that? And we always really appreciated that, because you advocated, uh, what we need for what we need and for what we aspire to. Um, you've consistently recognized the efforts of our teachers, um, our staff and our administrators, even bringing us coffee and hot chocolate sometimes on cold mornings. And you always seemed to know just when that would be the most appreciated and when it would really hit the spot. Um, as a parent, a member of the community, and a school committee member, you've expressed your appreciation for all that we do at HOD, and I'm sure that exactly the same thing is true at FK. We are grateful for your appreciation for what we do as educators, that appreciation really means a great deal. We've been very fortunate to have you as a partner in education. We know that you'll continue in that role as a parent and a community member in all the years to come. So, we wish you the best in the future, we thank you for working with us and helping us to live our vision, teach, inspire, empower, succeed. And you never underestimated the importance of that word, empower, very important. And in your case, that E could also stand for exuberance in your role, because we always felt your energy. Uh, please feel free to come back to HOD to visit us at any time, our door is always welcome, especially if you have that coffee and hot chocolate with you. So, thank you, Jeff, your efforts are really, truly appreciated. Thank you.
And we have a card for you.
Oh, yes.
I can't give it to you yet, because there are people who will be angry because they didn't have an opportunity to sign it, so we will give it to you, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now your cards leave.
Well, we did that at the teacher recognition, too, didn't we?
Yeah, it took, yeah, it took right back. Like, see it?
That's right.
Uh, Jeff, I don't know if you had anything you, words of wisdom you wish to impart upon us, or?
Nope, I just, um, no.
Well, thank you again.
And I just also want to say, you know, it has been a real pleasure working with Jeff for the last six years, and as everybody has said, he has been a, a very consistent advocate for children and for our staff. Um, and I also, not just within the school community, but also in the broader community of Norfolk, with the, um, Wednesday Suppers that you've organized, and the, the recognition of the various needs that families have at different times. Um, it's just been a real pleasure, and I appreciate your, your thoughtfulness and your reflectiveness and, um, your advocacy. So, thank you for your service and your commitment.
All right, so, moving on, sorry?
And the hot chocolate, too. I should have said that, too.
No, we didn't get any hot chocolate. Good thing you're leaving, so. Um, if we could move on, all right, so we're going to go next, uh, up next is, we've got a superintendent contract, uh, Dr. Lardy's contract is up for review. So, if I could get a motion to approve the contract, and then we will then go through the finer points of it.
Can I make a motion that we approve the superintendent contract?
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so I'll just kind of lay out the terms of it, and then any further questions or comments, uh, we'll go from there. Um, the contract, first off, is, uh, it's a public document. Just missed it. Um, the, uh, the superintendent, uh, so, Dr. Lardy's contract is a public document, so this is available, so the information that I'll be kind of giving, the high view of it, uh, is available for the public to see. It is also available on the state website, is that correct? Does that work?
The contracts are submitted to the Department of Ed.
Okay, so Department of Ed will have that, but it's a public record, anyone who wishes to see it is more than welcome to. Um, so really, there's not that many changes with it. Um, so what worked out was this, um, there's only three real changes. Um, one, a slight increase in the cellphone allowance, went from $50 to $75, that just in recognition of the amount of time that Dr. Lardy spends on the phone at night, see snow days, um, and many, many other times. Um, there was old language in the contract, going back to her first contract, that required a, a medical exam, that's just boilerpoint language, that's not used anymore, so that was just taken out, um, that's just antiquated language, that just had no need to be in there. Um, and then the main thing, obviously, um, there is a, a bump in pay that goes along with it. In recognition of the fact that we seemingly are always going to be, um, fighting or struggling or doing everything we can as far as getting the best budget as possible, um, Dr. Lardy and the, and myself and Paul Cochran came to an agreement, um, something that's sort of consistent with that, in that her increases are going to be the exact same percentage that is within the teacher contract. So, that same percentage that's in the next two years of the teacher contract is what she's looking for. Um, so what that would be, and let me put my glasses on, just to make sure I give the right percentage here, um, is 2.5, year one of the contracts, and then what's the other percentage?
2.75.
2.75, year two. Year three, there is not agreed upon percentage yet, and that is only because at that point, we'll be into the next year of a contract with the teachers. So, that will be left open until that is also determined. Um, the only guarantee language in there is that it would be no less than 2%. Um, so that's that, so. I think that's all the main points of it, I don't know if you guys have any further questions?
And it's a three, and that it's a three-year contract.
And a three-year contract, yes, thank you, I did forget to add that.
No questions from me?
Nope.
Okay, so that's all the finer points, is it? Available for public viewing, once everything's all signed with it. Um, unless we have any further points, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Okay, and that's it for me, we'll move on to the now-extended Dr. Lardy.
All right. The next up on our agenda today, we have, uh, been under, uh, our math program has been under review for the course of this year. The math committee has been looking at the program, they've been looking at current research, uh, and they've been evaluating whether the program we have still meets our needs. And Dr. Jen Kelly, who is our Math and Science Curriculum Director, is here to present the findings of the committee and their recommendations.
Hi, good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. Um, as Dr. Lardy mentioned, we have been working hard all during this school year with the math committee on reviewing the math curriculum for both schools in Norfolk. Um, the math curriculum committee has increased in size this year due to the nature of the work that we were undertaking. Um, I feel really happy with the representation that we did have. We had one team representative from every grade level, as well as special education representation from HOD and from Freeman Kennedy, Mr. Sardi from the technology team was also part of our team, Dr. Tucker, Director of Student Services, Heather Letfy, um, and then both of our mass specialists at both schools were part of the team. So, it was a 17-member team, it was sometimes hard getting us all together in the same room, but I think it was a really great representation of, um, the needs within our district. The reasons behind conducting a math review, um, we really wanted to identify what were the needs and strengths for, um, instruction in the, in the district. Um, we wanted to look at student progress and growth compared to other districts. Um, we wanted to provide staff and families an opportunity to discuss and share their feelings about how math instruction was going for them. Um, it also gave us an opportunity to really look closely at what resources we do have in district and inventory those, and see where, if we were missing things, or if we had a surplus of certain items that we weren't using. Additionally, the school or the district currently uses the 2011 edition of the Go Math program. The 2011 edition is on its way, um, phasing out through the publishers of, with publisher. And so, we knew that, um, we were going to have to go with a new program eventually, and this is a, a really nice time to really look at the program that we're using and see if we wanted to make a change. Um, and then also, finally, to identify any areas for future professional development for our teachers. One thing I just think is really important when we look at the curriculum review, is I think sometimes the terms curriculum and program are interchanged, and we really wanted to be specific, that the curriculum is not something that we choose, the curriculum is what the Massachusetts Frameworks are dictating, those are the standards that we need to teach. The program, the program that we're currently using, the 2011 edition of Go Math, is the, I like to think of it as the vehicle that we're using in order to get the curriculum to our students. Um, and so, we were determining as part of our whole curriculum review, do we need to make a switch in program as well. So, it's been, um, a heavy process, um, with many steps. The first phase was really gathering information, we wanted to survey our stakeholders, so teachers and families. Um, we did some research into local and successful districts. We also inventoried the available resources that we currently have in district, and then we looked at our assessment data, both for our district and across the state. From there, we did some really thorough analysis, we reviewed all of the surveys, we identified key themes and concerns from, um, both staff and families. We highlighted our strengths and our opportunities as a district, and we reviewed best practices. Um, our third phase was identifying what key components we wanted to make sure that a new program choice would have, and we created an evaluation tool on how we would monitor those programs. Finally, we had program selections and vendor presentations, we went on site visits, had further discussion, and that leads me here to tonight for our recommendation to the school committee, um, and going forward, we will have more work to do. Um, one of the first phases, or one of the first things that we did in gathering information was surveying the stakeholders. Uh, the first survey that we sent out was to staff, we had a total of 49 staff members in pre-K through sixth who took part in this survey. 77% of our teachers have more than 11 years of experience, which was just really amazing to me. Um, and there were a total of 15 questions, they were multiple choice, short answer, ranking and sliding scale. Uh, we asked teachers about the amount of daily homework they were giving students. Some of the questions that we asked our teachers, and that we asked the same questions of families, because we were also trying to investigate, um, if there was any disconnect. So, for example, if a third-grade teacher was thinking that they were giving 30 minutes of homework an evening in math, but parents were reporting that their students were taking 90 minutes, that would obviously be a disconnect that we wanted to, um, to address. So, we really tried to mirror some of the same questions on both surveys, to see if we could get more investigation about how math was being produced or instructed in this, in the district. We asked about the type of homework assignments that, um, teachers were giving, and, um, then we asked some specific questions on teacher perception, perceptions of the current program. Overall, the, um, the feelings regarding the 2011 edition of Go Math were positive, um, they felt that it was highly aligned to the standards, um, that it gave them adaptability, so that they could implement math strategies in the classroom. Some of the concerns that we had, or that staff had, was sometimes they felt that there was a pressure to cover the vast amount of curriculum and the allotted amount of time we have during the year, but I think that's a battle that all teachers face. Um, and that, um, that there wasn't always the time that they had hoped to reteach, um, lessons if, um, students were struggling. They also felt that, um, it, that the program provided great opportunities for home-to-school connections, which is something that we found a little bit of a difference when we talked to families. And so, that was really, um, a key point for us as a committee as we were going forward. We talked about what, what parts of, of the program were most important to staff, and highlighting those, so that when we were looking at new programs, make sure that, um, they were being addressed. And overall, the strengths, the current strength, the, I'm sorry, the strengths of the current program, the 2011, was that there was access from home and online tools, it was strongly aligned to the standards, there's a lot of reports that are available that can help teachers to inform their instruction, um, there's different levels of assessments, um, there's the ability to differentiate, there's a strong technology component, component, and, um, numbers of resources for teachers to use with their students. Some of the concerns was a lack of a spiral review, meaning that, um, for example, geometry is usually something that's towards the end of the school year taught, so students were maybe in the end of, let's say, first grade, um, shapes, and they're not really seeing that again until the end of second grade. And so, the concern is that they're going to have school hits on certain topics throughout the school year. Another concern is that the program can be very language-heavy, um, the tests can be full of word problems, for students that have some difficulty with decoding and reading, that can be a struggle. Um, there was also concern that there were too many, uh, I'm sorry, not enough word problems, too many word problems on assessments. Um, one of the concerns is that often, in teaching major concepts, Go Math likes to provide multiple strategies, and in some cases, for example, fourth grade division, they teach seven different, um, strategies for long division, which can be a little bit overwhelming for some of our students. One of the other issues with assessments was multiple choice tests and online tests. We also, our staff also recognized that vocabulary resources for math were weak, and that some topics were covered too quickly. So, those were all things that staff had identified as issues they wanted to have addressed in looking at a new program. They also provided suggestions, um, they had asked us to look into Go Math, the new edition, uh, to look at everyday math, Envisions, MyMath, they had asked us to find out what Plainville and Runtham were using, um, they requested PD to be throughout, um, before the end of this school year, so that they could come in this fall and be ready to run. Um, and, they wanted more games for their students. So then we surveyed parents, and we had a 12-question online survey. Um, the question, the questions were specific to individual children at specific grade levels, there was a mix of multiple choice, sliding scales and short answers. Uh, we sent out requests to fill out the, the survey through ConnectEd and the Superintendent's newsletter, and we had a three-week response collection period. I was very pleased, we had 388 respondents, which, um, it, I felt was a decent response for, um, a survey of this nature. And it was really consistent participation, you can see from the numbers here on the slide, that, um, we had almost equal representation from parents at each grade level, which I thought gave us a nice picture of what the concerns were K through sixth, um, for math instruction. Additionally, 15% of the families identified that their students were receiving developmental math services, and 6% responded that they, um, their student was receiving some type of IEP accommodation for mathematics. So, one of the first questions we asked was about parental efficacy, how comfortable parents felt in helping their students with math homework at home, and you can see, um, in kindergarten, everyone feels really comfortable helping out the kindergarten, but as students age, the comfort level of parents decreased. And that was a red flag for us as, as committee. We asked about what type of homework supports parents were providing, most parents are checking answers upon completion, um, 62% of parents were providing reading support. Again, that was another red flag for us as a committee, particularly when we were concerned about how language-heavy the current program could be. So, we were seeing the same themes arise in time and time again, and you can see, um, some of the other supports that parents provide, using, um, online games, talking through problems, pointing out math and everyday situations, and so on. We asked about time on homework spent, and for the most part, um, the parent responses, um, were, were pretty much on target with what our teacher expectations were for homework. So, that was a good thing for us to see, there wasn't any crazy outliers when we compared the teacher results to the parent results. And then we asked about student efficacy, as far as parents considering, um, how their student could complete math homework other than games independently. And again, we saw the same trend, in that as the younger the student, the more efficient their students were, and as students aged, the more help or support they needed in being able to complete their math, and math homework, um, independently. So then we asked about satisfaction levels with the current program that we were using, and overall, parents were satisfied or very satisfied with most of the areas of, of the program. Um, homework, the two things that stood out for us, though, were, um, support materials for parents and communication regarding math instruction. Uh, you can see that 43% of parents were less than satisfied, um, regarding the support materials available to parents, and 47% were, um, less than satisfied with communication regarding math instruction. So, again, these are nice, um, targets for us to look at in, in new programs, to make sure that we were addressing those needs of families. Um, we talked about resources, um, asked if the school was providing the necessary reference materials to assist student, parents and students. Um, again, we see the older students get the less, um, they were feeling comfortable with supports being provided. So, the major themes that we came from, um, that came out of the parent surveys were that there was an overwhelming request for parental support and ref, and resources. Uh, parents were specifically asking for clear directions on assignments, for directions on how to access the online resources available to them. Um, they asked for parents' nights by grade level in particular topics, and an explanation of why topics were being taught in a certain way. Um, the presentation of multiple strategies was confusing for students, many parents spoke about. Um, they were asking, again, for more communication around assessments, um, there was a lot of, there were many comments about our use of the REFLEX program for fact fluency, it was highly favored in our lower grades in K through two, but it was, um, seen as more monotonous and harder for students to buy into as they were aging through grades three through five. Um, there was a request, a strong request for more enrichment opportunities in mathematics. There's also a lot of distrust and misinformation surrounding the Common Core, that was a comment that we saw quite often in the comment section of the surveys, and something that we definitely will be addressing as we move forward with the committee. Um, and then, again, much like the teacher, um, responses, there was concern about the language-heavy assignments and the dislike of multiple choice assessments. As part of that research gathering, we also completed inventories of, of available resources, every grade-level representative went back to their team, and they completed, filled in, um, a document like this. And then we did some research into the top-performing districts, we looked at MCAS scores in 2017 in mathematics, and you can see, um, that of the top perform, the top 10 performing districts for math, uh, they were using Go Math or Everyday Math, with the exception of Envisions, um, but we found out that the, um, districts that were using Envision had actually, were phasing that out. So, we found that most high-performing districts are using Go Math or Everyday Math, which started us thinking, maybe we should look at Go Math and Everyday Math. And then we looked at the top districts for growth in MCAS, so districts that had shown the most growth in their math instruction. And you can see here that Go Math is, um, a leader in, in that, that group of... And you can see here that Go Math is a leader in, in that, that group of districts. And then we did some research into best practices. We read multiple scholarly articles on best practices in mathematics instruction. This piece here from the National Council for the Teachers of Mathematics is just a really nice summary, one of the articles that we came across in our research, and identifying what are eight effective practices that we really want to make sure that our teachers are employing with our students. Particularly what was really stood out to the committee, and we were looking for specifically in new program, is looking for that support for a productive struggle in learning mathematics. We want our students to be challenged, and I think that also talks to the piece of the need for enrichment within the district. And then, again, you can read along here what some of those, those main practices are. Okay. So we had to create an evaluation tool for when we had vendors come in to share their products. We looked at a variety of rubrics from different districts across the country. We ended up coming with the, developing the Norfolk Public Schools rubric. We had 39 separate criteria that we put into five domains of organization: math content, inclusion assessment, and technology. We had vendor visits on Tuesday, February 13th, and we asked representatives from Everyday Mathematics to join us and from Go Math to come in. Result, we tallied up all of the, so we met with the, with the vendors. Each vendor had two hours to present, and then we had about half an hour of discussion after that. The committee, at the end of the first day, took a little bit of time away. We did some research, again, because we realized from the use of our rubric that we had set up, that there were some questions that maybe weren't answered in the presentation. So we ran, talked. We came back a week or two later. We voted. We submitted our final responses. And you can see from the vendor results, Everyday Math came out slightly ahead of Go Math. But it wasn't such a large, you know, it wasn't such a landslide win. And there were so many questions that we still had as a committee when we were having conversations, that we decided we wanted to go a little bit further. And as the discussion went on, we decided we wanted to see Everyday Math and Go Math in action. And so we had a visit team of seven members, myself, Eileen Cludier, the developmental math teacher from HRD, Sonia Cataldo, kindergarten teacher, and then from, from Freeman Kennedy, Tracy Tronberg, a fourth-grade teacher, Matt Velkey, a special education teacher, and we went and, and Mary O'Reardon, our developmental teacher. We went and we saw two schools. We went to see Go Math at the Leroy Wood Elementary School in Fairhaven. They are in year three of their implementation of the 2015 edition of Go Math. And then we went to the Cypiken Elementary School in Marion, Massachusetts, and they are in year 10 of Everyday Math. After we met and went on the site visits, we had a final decision day, which was last, last week, I guess. Now, where 14 members of the math committee met to review our resources, we shared out our experiences from the site visits, we discussed the merits and concerns of each program, and we came up with some lists of final program strengths. Go Math, a big strength for us, is a familiar program. Although it is a new addition, it's very similar in its scope and sequence. It has an excellent alignment to math frameworks. The enhanced assessments as part of the program really spoke to us. There's detailed reporting by student, classroom, grade level, and standard available. There was an improved vocabulary development section to the new program, differentiated, differentiated instructional choices, home-to-school connection was enhanced. One of the things that really stuck out is, on student homework pages, they all have what is a QR code. So if a parent is trying to help your student at home and you're stuck, you can use your smart device and read the QR code, and a lesson will pop up, a video lesson at home to help you with your child, or the child can see themselves. And there is also something called a personalized math trainer, which, over the course of time throughout the school year, as a student is inputting their information, taking assessments, it's going to adapt to the student's ability level and, and provide them additional challenge or remediation as needed based upon how they've been performing on assessments and activities in class, which we thought was a really great new piece. Everyday Math, one of the really big things that we loved about that was a spiral in curriculum, that they were having multiple hits to topics over the course of the year, that they had a tier, a nice tiered instruction piece. There was a lot of problem solving. They were assessing students on content cumulatively throughout the year. There was adaptive technology and high-quality board games and manipulatives, and also they had some really nice detailed reports that we were able to see. Some of the concerns with Go Math, there is a lack of a spiral in review. It still is language-heavy. There are still many strategies used for particular concepts. However, with Everyday Math, it's not always teaching to mastery. There was a lack of repetition and practice for students with disabilities, which was a big concern of ours. We were also unfamiliar with the program, so there would have been a learning curve for implementation. And it was also requiring daily teacher data input to make full use of the predictive features, which seemed it could be a bit cumbersome for staff, was if they were trying to learn a new program, and then also having to input lots and lots of data every single day. So we took a vote, and our vote at that time is strongly in favor of staying with Go Math, but going to the 2015 edition. The committee feels that the upgrades that the Go Math program has made address many of our concerns that we had with the 2011 edition. We feel that the program complements the math practices that we're always, already using in our classrooms and in the district, and that there will be a limited learning curve for implementation of the new addition, thus allowing us to really focus on pedagogy and developing math instructional skills to better improve student math experiences. Was able to speak with our sales representative, the projected cost for our five-year contract with Go Math is $81,088, which is a lot. But we think that this is really, this is the best thing for our district moving forward, and we are, we are excited, hopefully, to continue in going with Go Math and being able to really focus on increasing and spending our time on focusing on instruction instead of just learning how to use a program. Our next steps are scheduling professional development, creating new assessment schedules for 2018 and 19, researching the reporting capabilities of the new program, identifying potential problems, incorporating the strengths of other programs into our instruction. So we recognize that Go Math has a lack of a spiral review. Now that we are fully aware of that, our plan is to incorporate that spiral review into the Go Math program. So we're excited, having seen some other things in action, on how we can even better improve Go Math, and that is our recommendation to.
Questions about the presentation or the recommendation, and then we can talk about the financial end of it?
Is there a more recent version than 2015?
2015 is their most recent edition. What we did in talking with our representative, we are putting a caveat that if Go Math was to upgrade again, that we would be, we would go with a future upgrade within our five-year contract. So if they were to come out with a new edition in the next five years, that we would automatically...
Include with, without cost?
Without cost.
Yes.
Good.
One of the questions I had, I noticed it said for first and second grade, 25% of respondents said no homework. Now, I'm wondering if those kids were like me, that just said, hey, I got no homework. I'm going out to play. Or if there's really kids that are getting, going through the year with no homework.
So homework differs, and this is actually one of the things that we really want to look at for professional development next year as well, is really examining how homework is being used across grade levels. Our younger grades, kindergarten, homework, I think, speak to us a little bit, it's homework is really not an, an active part of the math curriculum. And then in first and second grade, it, it starts very small in the beginning of the year, and then it increases, mostly fact fluency type of practice skills, those types of things. This was given, the, the survey went out in October, and so parents who might have had a first-time first or second grader at that point in the year, they haven't jumped into the homework phase of their school year, if you will. So that might be why you're seeing some discrepancy there.
The other question I had is, is that the resource support was low a lot? What do we want to expand?
So one of the things that we talked about on the committee quite at length is, how can we best address? We think that providing some parent education nights might be a nice way. We've also, though, had, had concerns with low attendance at, at those types of offerings that we've had in the past, and we were thinking of potentially doing some type of webinar series, where if a classroom, a grade-level teacher was willing to just talk about concepts that they're coming up with. So grade four is always a big, it's your long division here. Okay. We have some volunteers maybe showing, talking about what are the key concepts that are coming out of long division, why we're teaching seven strategies for long division. It's not just Common Core, it's actually, there's brain science behind that for why we're doing, and really, at least providing the information for parents to have a better understanding of what's going on. So those are really things that we're looking at. I think the Go Math 2015 edition, as far as the resources, the example I provided about the QR codes, I think that's going to help out a lot. I think parents expressed, there was frustration in being able to help their students with their homework and not clear on, they weren't in the lesson that day. And so if there's, if they don't have a resource to build off of, they're kind of stuck at their loggerheads with their children, with the kitchen table, and so.
Well, that's why I always like to be, that must be the best of everything, because I'm in the top 10 performing schools for math on the MCAS. What wasn't there? How far were we off on that?
I don't know that. I can look that up and find out for you.
In the top 9% of the state, but I don't know what the actual number is.
I don't know what our actual ranking is.
I'd like it to be within that top 10.
As would we. As would we.
So that's all I got.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you sort of touched on one of my questions, which was, the multiple strategy approach, is that part of the, is that specific to the Go Math curriculum? Not, because I was always under the impression that that was part of the Common Core, and it sounds like...
It's part of the standard, so it's part of the curriculum, which is coming from the Common Core. The idea is that we are no longer starting just with the algorithm. We want students to have a strong foundation of why does math work in a certain way? When looking at multiplying fractions, why do you have a smaller number when you're multi? And if we just teach kids the, the algorithm, they're like, well, that's just the way you do it. And they're not understanding, well, I'm taking something that's small and multiplying it by something that's small, and now it's even smaller. And so by teaching them strategies and multiple strategies on how to come up with that, they have a deeper understanding and appreciation of math. We saw some really great lessons on the site visit. One of them in particular was in a sixth-grade classroom, and they were looking at ratios and proportions, and the students were going around, and they were literally six different ways that kids solve the problem, and each of them could explain in a way that made sense how they had solved the problem. And so they were really thinking and able to explain their thinking, and I think that's, that's the goal. That's what we want to get kids, what we want them to be doing.
Yeah, that makes sense, and my assumption from that story would be that we each learn a little bit differently, so each one of the six grasps onto one.
And I think one of the keys in, if you want to say, this new form of instruction, is really getting kids to think about and problem-solve, so not just telling them, but having them find out those answers. And we see that a lot with the Go Math program. It's giving students, they're coming out with a, with a problem to think about in the beginning of the lesson, then they go into the lesson, and they go out, and they break out, and they, and they figure these things out. And I think that's really important, and it's exciting to see kids problem-solving, and that's really what we want to do. We want to make sure we're giving them authentic, real-life problems that they're working with, multiple strategies that they can employ, and just really have them build that math sense, if you will.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
I wonder, in the webinar you mentioned, which I think is a good idea, if that makes it easier rather than parents attending these things? I know, in my experience with my own kids, as far as like, if they came and presented a math problem to, to me, and, and outwitting me is not much of an achievement, but, and I'll look at it, and I'm like, okay, I know what the answer is, but I don't, I almost, I became hesitant to explain the way that I learned in ye olde days, and, and my daughter and my son or whatever, crying, like, no, you can't do it that way. I'm like, eh eh eh. So I wonder, in those specific webinars, if it almost becomes a, some sort of self-help for the parents, where this is their safe place, and they can reach out and explain, like, they can express their lack of confidence in having these discussions with children? I don't know if that adds to any of this from the children's standpoint or from the parent's standpoint, not quite knowing what feedback to give your own kids or what to explain, because you're afraid, I, I was just afraid it was going to mess them up somehow.
It's, it's one of the things we see all the time in, in talking with parents, is like, how much support should I be giving? What should I be doing? And they're really a question of what, what, where is that line? And I think, particularly with this Go Math program, and I really, really like, is these videos. They're short, but they start with the conception, and then they bring the kid to the algorithm. And as, as a parent myself, I can be like, oh, that makes perfect sense now. And so you can see that thought process, because our students are not always our best reporters when they come home. And so they might say, well, that's just the way that you're supposed to do it. And we also don't want them to be so rigid in their thinking, that they're just, well, that's just the way that you're supposed to do it. However, I think these videos give us, and there's videos on almost every topic, that parent, and they're short, one minute to three minutes in length.
So parent-length?
Well, they, you know, they're, they're perfect length for on, on your iPhone as you're waiting in between, you know, activities at, after school and so forth. But I think they're really, really helpful. And then I also think that we need to, as teachers and as schools, sit down and really think about, okay, what are, you know, where are our disconnects, and how can we reach out to parents and, and inform them and, and kind of work together a little bit better on supporting, on supporting our students?
Yeah, I think that can make a big difference, because I think you're, you almost need to almost gear it as much for the parents as the student, for the parent to be able to understand, because, and, and it may get to your, your concerns that are raised with the Common Core, where that's sort of become the, the boogeyman out there to some extent. And if people's apprehensions can be addressed to, to a larger degree, and by seeing all this stuff, then maybe like, okay, then they can ask, then they can still have questions and stuff, but it's not sort of that general overriding fear, there's actually an understanding of what the concepts are, and then they themselves are a little more, at least I would be, a little more confident as far as answering the questions and providing help or whatever the case is, instead of undoing everything the teacher's just done for that day. That's really not helpful.
And I totally understand. I remember when my kids came home and showed the lattice math method, multiplication method to me once. I was like, what? You know, I'm a teacher, and I was like, what, what is that? And, but to be able to understand why we're teaching them these multiple strategies of looking at mathematics, it's just building their understanding of math, and I think that's so important. But, you know, we know what we know and what we were successful with, what we were studying. So it's, you know, it's a bad, it's a hump we have to overcome, but I think that the more information that we can share and really fine-tune on what those specific questions are that families have, we can better support you.
Is the webinar solution live, or is it recorded?
There, so there are two pieces. There are the videos that are already pre-made through the system, and then we are also thinking that as a school, we are going to have, we would like to develop some webinars, just talking about upcoming units, kind of more of a general overview type of question.
What solution or platform would you be using for the live version?
For live version? Well, that would be, I talked to Mr. Sardi a little bit about that. We talked about maybe possibly doing kind of a YouTube video, like we use for, for the morning show, and being able to provide parents links so that they could go to our YouTube account and see the videos there, and have a catalog of those videos.
Okay. If it's live, how, how many people are you going to be able to host?
Have, to be honest, we haven't really gotten to that point. I don't know that if we are, if we might do a combination of live and then just pre-recorded events.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
The only other question, I know, as far as financial, did, so we got the cost for the Go Math cost, was there, do we have a comparison for Everyday Math, what that would have been?
I don't have a comparison for that, but I can tell you that when we had, in 2012, when we purchased Go Math the first time, we had a budget of 85,000. We spent $85,000 in 2012 for the program.
And this was what, 81? Is that what the figure was? Okay.
So the initial quote came in this morning at 180,000-plus change for the Go Math, and I had suggested Jen call back and, and tell him he needed to, to reduce that. So she was able to negotiate it down almost $30,000.
Keep calling.
We talked to her.
That was a pretty aggressive cut. We, we pushed pretty hard, and they did reduce it by almost $30,000, and they included a free day of professional development in the contract. And they also agreed, as Jen mentioned, if any new addition comes out... And they also agreed, as Jen mentioned, if any new addition comes out, that we will have all of our material replaced at no cost. So I think it's a very competitive quote. We had seventy thousand budgeted this year for the new math adoption, we knew it was going to be a high-cost implementation because there's a lot of math consumable workbooks that we need to purchase as well as the technology subscription. What I think that we can do, again, this will be for five years, so we won't be buying any student consumable workbooks or math texts over the next five years, this will cover that. And so next year in the budget, you'll see a decrease in both buildings because we've had textbook accounts and, and budget, we're budgeting annually for the math program, so we'll see a decrease there. But we have seventy thousand in the account, it, we're about ten thousand short of the proposal. What we can do, there's two different possibilities. I think that we, we have a couple of areas within instructional services and supplies that we may have savings at the end of the year, so we may be able to fund it all from that account. We also do have some projected savings in special education transportation, so at our May meeting, we could do a budget transfer to fund the additional ten per, ten thousand. As we just got the revised quote about an hour before the meeting, I haven't had a chance to have Todd look at it, but we can fund it, even if we had to, we could fund seventy thousand this year and the remaining ten thousand after July 1 because we do have money set aside for curriculum adoption in our next budget. So I'm comfortable with the, the price and would recommend the committee vote to appropriate the funding pending how we, how we structure that, whether we need a budget transfer to come back in May.
So just for clarification, we don't think there's any chance that everyday math would come in, which was almost the same, would come in markedly less is the only thing I broke down, okay.
No.
So it'd be fair to say you think they would be roughly the same?
I would think they would be roughly the same if, I think everyday math might be even a little bit more expensive to be honest because they have...
Unless you call back a second time and then...
Well, they have tech, they have a literal, like physical textbooks in addition to their workbooks, they have a few more materials which I would assume would be more expensive just in, in putting into students.
Yeah, that would seem that they'd have a built-in cost, they can't get past for that portion, so, okay. So, question I had, anyone else have any questions? Okay, all right, so then we need, okay, so then we need a vote to accept the recommendation to...
Adopt the Go Math.
The Go Math.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation to adopt Go Math.
Yes.
Second? Second was Jeff, okay. Well, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Jen.
Okay, I'll go pretty quickly through the next three things that I have. In your packets, there is an update from our joint special education steering committee. It's the committee that we have established that we are working with, the consultant, Dorsey Yearly, and it's our pre-K twelve to grade twelve, actually pre-K to twenty-two special education committee. We identified two key goals that we were working on this year and the first was around social emotional learning supports and you can see on the front page, we had a long-term vision and a short-term goal. The short-term goal was really about sharing and analyzing information regarding programming for students with social emotional behavior needs and really to start to look at the continuity of programming and the vertical alignment of curriculum across the three elementary districts and, and between the elementary districts and King Philip. The other was transition planning, so to take a look at what we do to prepare students transitioning from grade six into the King Philip regional system and to try to streamline that process and to be able to provide enough information in advance for all districts to be able to budget appropriately. Included in this packet, you'll see the detailed action steps, we did develop a strategic plan for each of those two goals and there's detailed action steps. We will be meeting again in June and expect to have these two goals pretty much wrapped up by that time. So if anybody has questions, I can go into it in further, further detail, but the action steps are pretty self-explanatory. Any questions on that?
No. Thank you.
All right, I know we just did this at the last meeting, but we by policy have to do a quarterly bullying report. It was, we did it at the last meeting because our February meeting, we cut short because we had a budget meeting to attend at the King Philip Regional School and then our March meeting was canceled due to snow, so we're doing another quarterly budget bullying report. At H L Day last, last quarter, there were five discipline issues and reports that were regarding bullying behavior. Four of the reports have been fully investigated by building administrators and one is in process currently. At the conclusion of the completed investigations, the administrators determined that three of the incidents reported really more reflected inappropriate behavior or conflicts between students, but they didn't meet the criteria to be considered bullying. One instance was determined to constitute bullying and appropriate disciplinary action was taken and steps put in place to prevent occurrences. At the Freeman Kennedy School this quarter, there were four discipline issues regarding bullying. Again, three were fully investigated, one is undergoing. Two of the incidents were determined not to meet the criteria and one was determined to be a bullying situation and again, active measures were put in place to prevent future occurrences and to support the victim and the aggressor. The fourth incident, as I said, is still under investigation. Any questions about the bullying?
Are these numbers consistent year to year roughly?
We have seen a higher incidence in reporting this year and in situations that have been identified and we talked about that, I think at our, our last meeting, that that's, that's not unique to Norfolk. People have been reporting across the state, increase in, in bullying reports and incidents. We do have strong programs in place, anti-bullying and prevention programs, we use the Open Circle program, we use the Mark program, but we will be looking at additional tools. We are looking for next year to do a review of the programs for grades three to six and possibly add another program to support students in, in the area really of online bullying and digital citizenship. That's a, a program, we do address it, but we want to do something a little bit more robust, so we will be looking at that next year.
Fair. Thank you.
The last thing that I have for tonight is, we presented our budget to the school committee and to the public at our public hearing in March and then we went to the advisory board last week and presented our budget request. Currently, the town is still significantly short in terms of balancing the town budget. They've asked us to try to reduce our budget by another forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and even with that reduction, they still have an a hundred thousand dollar shortfall on the town side. What they have, what Todd and Mark has told me is that if we can make this reduction, they're going to really try hard to close that remaining gap without any further cuts to the elementary budgets, but they're asking us to try to work with them to, to go into town meeting with a balanced budget. In the past, that has, I think, really served us well to, to go forward with a balanced budget that the advisory board supports and the town really has tried to fund us at an appropriate level and they worked with us last year when we had a budget shortfall, they picked up some of our maintenance costs in the town budget so that we could protect that. So I think it's important to, to try to collaborate. The reductions, I had a chance to work with our administrative team, we are proposing the following reductions to reduce that forty-four thousand. Our speech position, that was a request for a point-five position in the new budget where we'd like to reduce to a point-four, that will be a savings of six thousand, six thousand one thirty-six. We would be recommending eliminating the extra day for paraprofessional staff, which we were hoping to use for professional development for forty-eight hundred. We did have additional retirements after the budget process, so we had a, we have one additional teacher retirement and we have two paraprofessional retirements. So that will generate a savings of about twenty thousand dollars. We are recommending eliminating the eight thousand we have in, as a placeholder for we can even to homeless transportation, that will zero that line out. So if we have a student that becomes homeless, we will have to manage that cost through additional cuts next year, but we're recommending zeroing that out. We also are recommending reducing the curriculum adoption line forty-seven hundred, forty-five dollars. That, those cuts get us down the forty-four thousand we've been asked to reduce. Obviously, any reductions are painful, I mean, we, we, the budget request was conservative. We already have in the budget reductions of clerical staff and a reduction of our point-two team chair position, but the town simply doesn't have the revenue to, to meet the demands at this point. If there's a change in the budget circumstances, we would advocate for going back to the town and asking for some of these things to be restored. And so my recommendation would be that we vote to make these required reductions so that the town can balance out the budget for town meeting, although we have talked to advisory board and shared that we, we would like to see if additional revenue becomes available or if the financial circumstances change, that some of these cuts be, be looked at to be restored.
Do we have a motion to accept the reduced budget amount?
I make a motion that we accept the reduced budget amount.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Have we used the homeless transportation?
It's varied year to year, so some years we have, we haven't, we don't have any students currently, but we have in the past, so it's, it's an unknown.
Last year we did.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a bit of a risk.
Yeah, there's no way to foresee it or predict it.
Right.
I mean, we're just, we're gambling a little bit here, but I don't know what other, we don't really have much of a choice. I would agree with the sentiment, I think the town's certainly been very good working with us and I think behooves us to keep doing that going forward, so. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right, moving on. Committee, subcommittee, King Philip.
Last King Philip meeting was on Monday, April 2nd, at which time there were two items of, of interest. One happened to do with the bus contract. Fiscal 2019 bid was roughly to two seven, two hundred and seventeen dollars per bus per day. Fiscal 2020 was at two twenty-three. Fiscal 2021 was at two thirty for increases from 2019 to 2021 of four point three, three percent, two point seven six percent and three point one four percent accordingly. Other item of interest had to do with pending legislation. First act S. two-three-two-five relative to an act modernizing, modernizing the foundation budget for the 21st century, which also incorporates elements of S. two-point-one-seven and S. two-point-two-two-three as well as H. point-three-one-one relating to an act establishing a special commission relative to reimbursement of school busing costs. And that's it.
Those are all, I presume, still in committee somewhere?
Correct.
Is there any idea if they're going to get out of committee or unknown at this point?
Unknown at this time. Mr. Ross actually is, was one of the scientists for S. two-twenty-three-two-five relative to the foundation budget, so.
We will see. All right, that's all you had, Jeff, right?
That's it.
Thank you. Policy?
All right, policy, first, I was kind of bittersweet today because it might be my last policy meeting, so, but we have a second reading on the staff ethics and conflict of interest policy, no changes since the last meeting. And then we were, we're waiting on a legal opinion for a question we have on a, on a sexual harassment policy, Mass. brought out a new policy that we were looking at and there is also a new incidental changes coming in the next meeting for a few policies because we got to add in pregnancy and pregnancy for a situation related to, we included it with the protected classes. So those incidental changes will be coming at the next meeting. Hopefully I'll be here for that. If not, it's been a pleasure on the committee with everyone. Seems like Jeff's been here as long as I have. So, and then we've also got, I already mentioned the sexual harassment policy, so other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay. Budget, I guess, Jeff Curry, I don't think we really have anything going, I mean, we kind of just did that, so.
Yeah, no updates.
I don't think you could really add to that, right? Okay. All right, so, let's see, da-da-da-da-da. We just need to vote on the hearing minutes for both, I'm sorry, meeting minutes for both meetings on the 29th, which would have been the public hearing for the budget as well as the actual regular school meeting on the 29th, so we need separate motions and votes for those.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the budget hearing.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the meeting minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the school committee meeting.
Second.
Just to clarify, that's for March 29th as well, assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we are scheduled for meeting as of May 15th.
So Pam's just checking for me now, but I believe that that's the night of the town meeting.
I think you are correct.
So, we're just seeing if we can...
It's the second.
It's usually the second Tuesday, so.
It would be the third Tuesday in May.
That is the third Tuesday, yeah.
Because there's a first, eighth and fifteenth.
Oh, okay, so then we already adjusted it.
So it might be the eighth, so I think, I think we moved it already.
We already moved it, okay.
So it should be okay.
It's the second, so it'll be the, okay, great.
So the 15th, for the remainder of us, who's going to be here?
Yeah. Oh, no policy subcommittee meeting that night, right?
No, because we have to reorganize, so we won't have a...
So yeah, that'll be just a reorganization meeting depending. Okay, sorry, 15th. So once again, thank you Jeff Holmers, we appreciate it, best of luck, don't be a stranger.
Thank you guys for everything, by all means.
Mark, we don't know, but we may see you, if we do not, we will have, invite you back as an honored guest, if not, we may almost see you next month, so, thank you very much, we are adjourned.